Welcome to the first public hearing of the Charter Revision Commission. I'd like to welcome everyone here. And I think we'll start by just having everyone around on the commission introduce themselves. And why don't we do like a little brief summary of our bios, the way we did at the first meeting, just to give people a little bit of an understanding of who we are. Eleanor, would you like to start?
I'm Eleanor Georgias. I've lived in Bolton for four years and we love this town very much. Raised my two children here.
I'm Adam Teller. I grew up here, went to school here, moved away, moved back to raise my children. And I have served as the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the past few years and a member of the first public commission for years now.
I'm Rich Ays, moved here in 97 and have served on a variety of commissions in town.
Gwen Marion, I moved here in 1987 and I raised my two kids here. They went to Bolton High Schools, Bolton Public Schools. I've been involved in a number of different volunteer organizations, including the Bolton Land Trust and the Wireless Commission, Open Space Commission. And I'm very proud to have been appointed as Chairman of the Charter Revision Commission this time around.
I'm Jim Aldrich. I moved here in 94. Two children here. Probably served on the fire truck.
I'm John Tony. I grew up here, went to school here. We've done various different things for the last nearly 50 years. The only thing I could say is 45 years ago when the original Charter Commission was established, they asked me to be a member and we were busy in college and didn't have a chance to listen, a chance to catch up.
I'm Jay Braz. I moved here in 1984. Barely graduated Bolton High School. Moved away for a while, came back in 2001. We've been raising our kids ever since.
And Marcia, would you like to introduce yourself?
Marcia Osborne. I actually live in Manchester, but I'm still in Bolton about two weeks ago.
So, welcome every-- yes. Oh, yes, Eleanor, is the question. So, welcome everyone. I'm so glad to see you here. This is-- the Charter is a community-based document. So, it's great that you are all here. We look forward to your input. This is a document that we hope will serve the town well into at least the next 10 years when the board of selectmen will have to be done again. But it's-- this is a document that will-- it sets the rules for how the town is run. And we, as residents of Bolton, are the ones who determine how those rules are, what those rules are, and how the town works. So, it's a pretty neat-- it's a pretty neat system. And I know that we're all going to take our responsibilities very seriously to make it be a document that really reflects what you and we, as residents, want for the future of the town. Tonight, you'll be able to speak. And at any time in the next year, we have about a year to present our draft. If at any time you'd like to present other public-- other comments, just get ahold of me. You can email any of the commission members. You can email Josh Kelly. You can email Sandy Pierog. So, this is not going to be the only opportunity. Every time we have a meeting, there'll be a public comment section of the meeting and everyone will be welcome to comment at that time. There will also be another public hearing just before we-- I think it'll be right after we send our draft or right before we send our draft to the Board of Selectmen. So, you'll be able to comment on the draft at that time as well. Tonight, we're having a public hearing. After we close the hearing, we're to hold a meeting. We held one meeting so far. It was two weeks ago. We-- by statute, we're not allowed to talk-- we were not allowed to talk about anything substantive, so it was really all procedural. So, we really have not gotten into the nitty-gritty of the Charter at all. This will be the-- the meeting after the hearing tonight will be the first time that we really start talking about the details. You all are welcome to stay for that meeting if you'd like to. Our next meeting is next Thursday, the 20th, 7:00. And I think it's over at the Senior Center. So, you're welcome to attend that as well. Notices of this meeting were sent to at least 15 different boards and commissions in towns. Again, it's another way of really trying to solicit input from the community. And the Board of Selectmen started us off by giving us a list of 14 different items that they would like us to take a look at. So, we will be going through that list. But then, already, the list has grown. Hate to tell everybody, I think we're up to 19 now. But we will-- that's fine. That's our job. So, the list will grow until we start to cut it down. So, at this point, I will open up the floor to whoever would like to comment. If you could just come and stand at the microphone with your back over that way, so you're sort of facing everybody. And it is being taped for the Community Voice Channel.
So, this is the public hearing?
This is the public hearing.
I just wanted to make sure, as you said, come forward for a public comment. There's a public comment section. So, I just wanted to make sure which parts you were starting.
Okay, this is the public hearing. Yeah, this is the public hearing.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Gwen, could you just go over the 19 points that you have already, so that nobody's repeating them?
You mean, who would be repeating them? What do you mean?
And people came up with other suggestions, so they--
Oh, I'm willing to hear, and I think the commission is too. Even if people repeat what's on this list, I want to hear it. Because if five people have the same idea as one on this list, it shows that there's a real focus on that particular topic. So, I mean, and I'm not saying-- I would be glad to send you this list. I just think it might not be very time-efficient to go through the list. Yeah, but the list is-- I would definitely send it to you if you'd like me to send it to you. Would anybody like to address the commission? And also, when you come up, please state your name and address.
Rod Fournier, Borham, LeFarn Road. And I'd like to see, when you're done, that there's two line items on the ballot instead of just one that would-- so that if there's a seven-to-zero vote on three items, that goes in one column. And if there's a four-to-three vote, it ends up in the other column, so that when the voters vote, at least not everything's thrown out in your path order.
I'm not following it. Can you--
Well, if you've got 19 items--
Yep.
--and you agree on four of them, the whole board agrees on four of them, then those four should be put into one line item on the ballot when it comes to the public vote. That doesn't come with public vote, actually?
Yes, yes, it will.
Yeah. So, then those line items would be on one line versus the controversial items, which are on the other lines.
I see. So, you want to see the ballot would say, these are the unanimous commission votes versus these were the proposed commission--
Something to that effect, yeah. So, if something gets passed, then it's not for nothing.
Okay.
All right?
Yep, thank you.
Go on, Bill. I'll go after you. Just mix it up.
Willie Anderson, 77 French Road. Of the bullet items that we did receive, items 1 through 12, I am in full support of item 2 and item 4. It's the political process that I find kind of redundant. And we're giving up about a third of our population on the independent side. I don't know the proper procedure for an independent United ticket, and I'm sure they can somehow, but I don't see a lot of independents on a Republican ticket or the Democratic ticket, for the different positions on all the boards.
And Bill, for the people who have not seen the Selectmen's List, could you read items 2 and 4?
Sure, sure. I thought everyone had this. Number 2 is review possible edit of Section 3.1, Commission Boards, Agencies, and Officers and Related Sections for purposes determining whether each of these listed positions should continue to be elected or, if selected, positions should be filled by appointment instead. So, I'm in favor of appointed positions. And I've had discussions with other people about this, and one of the topics came up, well, if the Board of Selectmen is elected, can't they just appoint whoever they want? So, for your reference, I brought in, this is the town of Berlin, Connecticut. They're appointed and they have a seven-- this just happens to be planning and zoning, not picking on planning and zoning, but there's seven members who should be electors of the town that are appointed, no more than four members of any one party. So, here's some draft--
Thank you.
--regulations there. So, that's pretty much-- if we can remove as much politics out of our process as possible. I'm sure there's some talented people in town that could serve on the boards quite well, but just they're not willing to go through the political process to get elected. So, I think we're just giving up a lot of talent in town. And I would rather see people appointed by their skill set, not elected by their popularity. So, I'm in total favor of removing politics as much as possible. No offense to any politicians in the room. Thank you.
And then, yeah, what about 4, Bill?
4, yeah, 4. You know, I really was talking about-- my reason for coming here was to discuss boards and commissions. But then, number 4 is review possible edit of Chapters 5 and 6, Board of Selectmen and First Selectmen and related chapters, for the purpose of evaluating the town's form of government, potentially considering a switch to a council manager form of government or other government design, and otherwise making amendments to the assigned powers and duties of the town officials mentioned herein. I'm a big believer in hiring and appointing professionals as opposed to electing politicians. I don't have to talk about national politics. I think we all know where that is and how well that's working. It's not quite the same disaster at the town level, but again, appointing professionals with this accountability. If there's a group of people that are going to hire somebody or appoint somebody, and that's not working out, you know, people can say, hey, appointments first, it's not working out, let's appoint somebody else. Therefore, it's here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I can-- Do you want me to say my name again?
No.
I chaired the Economic Development Commission in town. I dropped that position. I'm still on the board. I'm going to serve out my time. But as far as efficiencies and consolidation, in my opinion, my personal opinion, you can take the Economic Development Commission and fold it into the Planning Commission. I find it a pretty inefficient, useless entity and accountable. Other towns are very successful with it. There are some towns that have a robust Economic Development Commission, paid staff, and they get a lot of accomplished. Bolton does not have that.
So, that's your recommendation, to fold it into the Planning Commission?
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure I'm clear on what you said.
Yes, I don't want to take up the entire night, but the state of Connecticut, most towns had a separate planning and a separate zoning commission. And it has been a trend over the past 30 years to merge the two into one commission. Most towns have done that. It's a planning and zoning, not separate commissions. But we kind of have the fox watching the hen house. I would rather have a planning commission that has a good strategic plan for the town that is, you know, pro-business and wants to do great things by the BOCD. And the zoning commission's job would be to say, okay, fine, we're going to get some business in town, but let's be responsible for the people that live here and make sure it doesn't get out of hand. So, I would like to see a pro-business unit, a pro-business planning division.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Wally, 41 Notch Road. I'm currently chaired in the Wetlands and also serve on Board of Finance. And I just second, you know, Bill's comments, you know, just I'm for and I just agree with his general comments on those. I'd also like to, in general, see the postwork on a more efficient town government that's focused on customer service and that we also keep a system of checks and balances in place, similar to what Bill was saying, so that we don't merge for the sake of merger and lose checks and balances that different commissions have against each other. And related to that, I'd also like to see, along with efficiency, just freedom of information. I don't want to lose that. I want to make sure that we keep the government open, so that people are able to participate and that also they can see what our government is doing, so they know how we're working for them, so that we can keep trust, you know, built between our town government and the people. And related to that, I just want to see a strong focus on ethics as well, because I think you have to have the customer service, you have to have the trust, you have to have the openness, you have to have the ethics. And you'll also be, you know, efficient customer service. So, that's what I'd like to see come out. I don't know what path we're going to take over the next few months to get there, but that's what I hope that I see in the final, you know, package as a combination that does that, so we keep that trust between town, you know, government and the people that we serve.
Thank you. Yes.
Chris Davie, Tangen, LeFarn Road. Just want to stipulate that I am here representing myself. I'm not speaking on behalf of the Board of Education or the Planning and Zoning Commission. Those are the things I remember. I have a list of things, just observations that occur to me as I look through the Charter. I'm happy to share the list with your Board Secretary if it's helpful in the taking. First of all, I would like to see the Charter incorporate gender neutral language, pronouns, including renaming First Selectmen to First Left Person. Second, the temporary public building commission currently under the Charter expires after 18 months. Given the recent issues that we had with the closeout of the high school addition project, which had gone much longer than 18 months, and the public building commission was not around really to assist in that closeout process, it might be worthwhile taking a look at whether it makes sense to extend the life of the building commission to correspond with the actual completion of the project. Third, I would be interested to see the commission explore whether it might be useful to do away with the Board of Finance and incorporate assumptions into an enlarged Board of Selectmen, say a nine, seven or nine-member Board of Selectmen. Along the lines of transparency, perhaps consider having the Charter require the Board of Ed, the Board of Finance, if we keep it, Board of Selectmen record either with audio or video, all public meetings are broadcast, and/or preservation online. I would like to see requirements in the Charter that all public meeting documents, including agendas, board packets, monthly budget reports, and so on, be made available online in formats that are organized and searchable.
Can I go back one? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Record all public meetings, BOF, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and Board of Education. What was it? Is that this one?
No, those are the three main boards. Thank you. I would encourage the commission to consider allowing non-citizen permanent residents to vote in municipal elections and budget referendums, to serve on appointed boards and commissions, and to run for local elected office to the extent allowed by federal or state law. I'd ask the commission to examine the budget adoption process and to consider either restricting the Board of Finance's ability to reduce proposed budgets or give townspeople the option when voting on the budget to indicate whether or no vote is in favor of increasing what has been put forward or decreasing what has been put forward.
Could you please repeat the first part of that, to restrict the Board of Finance's ability to do what?
Reduce the proposed budgets.
And then, the second part was to allow--
Townspeople the option to vote when they vote no, to indicate whether they're voting no because they would like to see a higher budget or a lower budget.
So, what would the function of the Board of Finance be if they couldn't reduce the budget? There'd be no functions. That's why you're advocating to get rid of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would like to see the current Kappa language amended to allow for Kappa funds to be used on things like computers and other technology equipment that tends to be bought in large amounts. For example, the school district may purchase $20,000 or $30,000 of computers at one time, but we haven't been able to use Kappa funds for those expenditures because, at least under the previous town administrator, the interpretation of the Charter was that it did not allow those sorts of purchases to be counted as capital expenses. Furthermore, again, with Kappa, look at requiring Kappa expenditures to be in proportion to the Board of Education's and town's overall shares of the budget. Perhaps with a provision to allow deviation from those proportions with unanimous vote of the Kappa Commission, or the Kappa Committee, rather.
Are they a majority vote or unanimous vote?
I'd be open to whatever you--
No, I want you to tell me what you want, so that I don't want to--
I would suggest--
I'm just making sure I'm clear on what you're saying.
I was suggesting a unanimous vote.
And it was to, that the Kappa funds would be apportioned in proportion to the size of the BOE budget at town Bolton budget?
If you deviate, I think is what he meant.
If you deviate from--
Then you have--
I'm advocating for both, that Kappa budgets be apportioned based on size of the relative budgets. And that, but I think there needs to be a mechanism to, if you, you know, maybe there's some really important project in town that we do want to spend 100% of the Kappa budget on, and so we should have a mechanism to allow for a variance. I was curious, in Section 10.2 of the Charter, what the rationale is for the bar on planning and zoning commission members holding salary to town offices. I wanted to ask, would you consider limiting restrictions to offices if proper, or perhaps even within the land use and planning departments?
What was the section that you--
10.2. There's an inconsistent offices section, I think.
Okay. That is incompatible offices is one of the sections on the Board of Selectmen's List.
I agree.
So, we will be looking at that section.
It also asks you to take a look at Section 11.1 and examine whether it is in accord with state law for Board of Ed officer elections. The Charter says that officers who each elected Board and Commission must be elected each year, but Connecticut State Statute governing Board of Education calls for Board of Ed officer elections to be held only after new members are elected, which would basically be after each municipal election. I would appreciate hearing some--
Do you know the statute number or the state statute?
It is. It's Chapter 170, Section 10-218.
Thank you.
I appreciate hearing some discussion on the commission on whether it would be Bolton's advantage to shift from town manager style to some other form of governance. And again, that might be on the list.
It is.
I have covered the list, so I apologize if I'm being redundant.
No, that's fine.
And then, finally, I noticed that the Charter doesn't address how the town clerk is chosen and whether they're elected or appointed. And just looking at some other town charters, they do specify, and I wonder if that's something we might want to look at.
Chris, do you have a view on your penultimate question there, the town manager thing, or you just want us to look at it?
I don't have a strong view one way or another.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Don't all jump at once.
Okay, so the, I guess I will close the public hearing if no one else wants to speak. And we will then move into our regular meeting. Last chance, anyone?
If you remember, you do it under number three, public comment.
Yes. Okay. So, we'll close the public hearing at 7:22. Thank you, everyone. So, now we have, have to decide how we're going to proceed. We, at the last meeting, had briefly talked about how we wanted to attack the biggest items first, because they were the hardest. So, we talked about attacking the form of government. Continuing business? Oh, okay. Yeah, okay. Sure, so we could, I'll entertain public comment now, too, since that's the next item on the agenda. Any other public comment? So, how would the, how would the commission like to proceed at this point? Do you want to get right into the form of government? Oh, I also wanted to say that at our next meeting, Josh has lined up two guests. John Elsesser from Coventry is going to come speak to us about the town manager form of government. And John Water, or John Walter, shoot, I'm sorry, I don't know his name. I don't remember his name, is from Columbia, will be speaking about the selective form of government.
So, he's the first selectman?
First selectman of Columbia. I did include it in an email to all of you a few days ago. I mentioned that. I think it was, I think it was Walter. Walter, or, yeah. So, we will have hands-on, you know, first-hand information from people at that meeting. And I remember last month, we also, or last meeting, we also talked about how this meeting we would be doing some preparations for receiving those guests, like talking about some questions that we might want to ask them. So, we could start in on that, if you'd like to.
Excuse me, Chair. I was looking at these, remember, there's a couple of things that people wanted to be read into the public comment?
Um, yeah.
Well, we all have it, so I'm sure that's good enough.
And I've received a couple of other public comments, too, that I will forward to you by email. I mean, they're going to, they're going to be made part of the record.
Yeah.
But one I received today from Liz Waters, talking about, she wants us to look at Section 2.5D regarding vacancies. So, they, as I'm getting these comments, I'm adding them to the list of items that I need to cover.
So, when will we get that updated at this point?
I will, I could update it and send it to you. In fact, I'll just tell you right now what the additions are to the list that I, and I hope that all of you might have additions as well. This was, what, one item that I remember, two items that I remember, is that we should look at Section 5D, which is, talks about the administrative officer. There's a whole section that defines the role of the administrative officer. I think we should look at that whole section. Section 10.3 deals with conflicts of interest, and since the last Charter was approved, we have adopted an ethics policy, so we have to make sure that the ethics policy language does not conflict with the conflict of interest language as in the Charter.
And shouldn't we, at the same time as I have written this down, as well, acknowledge that there is an ethics commission tonight?
Right, that's another, right, I have that on the list, too. And also, there's an energy committee now. So, if we want, and the Charter does list all the boards and commissions, so if you want to have that be a complete list, we would also--
There's an energy committee or commission?
I don't know.
You listed it as committee, energy committee, in the email, at least.
Okay. So, I hope we can check to see whether it's a committee or a commission.
And then, what is the ethics committee?
It's a, it's an ethics--
There's an ethics ordinance, and the ethics committee is charged with enforcing due rights when a complaint is made.
So, that's--
No, it postdates the Charter, which was only passed two years ago.
I had a request from one resident to, he felt that citizens should be a part of determining the scope of services of grants, so that the scope of service really reflects what the town is asking for under the grant. Patrice Carson sent an email asking us to take-- Patrice Carson sent an email asking us to take a look at section 11.1A, which is regarding the election of officers to elected commissions, only because there's a little bit of a time glitch there, and I believe that that's the same as number nine on the selectmen's list, which talks about organization of the boards' meetings and records per the recommendations of the town clerk. On section 9.9, procedure of town meetings, there was a request made at the last Charter revision here, Commission, 10 years ago, and I know this because I was the one who brought it up, so I'd like to bring up this issue again, which is that if requests are made at town meetings to vote by paper ballot, I would like us to think about whether that would automatically be agreed to, or if you have to have a vote on holding, on having the paper ballot vote. So the way, the way it reads now, there's nothing about a paper ballot, so if somebody makes a motion, and then there's a vote on whether to have a paper ballot, and then if that motion fails, then it just goes on to the, to the regular hand vote.
Can I ask why it didn't pass the last time? Why did it incorporate last time, 10 years ago?
Oh, rich.
All right. Let's not worry about it. Don't worry about it. I just, I just.
It didn't pass. But I thought that maybe since Quinn wound up, we would have left the last impression. I got one of those memories, you know.
The only thing that lasted, the last impression was that it didn't pass. But I, no, as, as we start to go through the list, I will start to pull out my notes, and I'll try to focus in to see whether we covered these issues 10 years ago, if that would be of help to us. I mean, we're looking at this with fresh eyes, we're, we're a whole new board, so what we did 10 years ago really shouldn't.
There may have been a good reason it didn't pass, I don't know.
So give you an example. Several years ago, the teachers contract came to town meeting to vote on it. There was 167 people present, 20 to 30 people spoke in favor of the contract, who spoke against. If you want to have a paper ballot, there'd be 167. It was a show of hands, it was almost unanimous that it'd get approved, so I'm just speculating that might be the reason some of these things are so overwhelmingly popular. Why do you want to have a paper ballot automatically?
Well, my, my thought was that if you've got a, it's very hard for people to vote against an item that, where you see the room is filled with people that you know are on one side of the issue, it's just hard if you know that your neighbors are for an issue and you're not for it, or, you know, so.
That's much better.
So we could just, that's just an item that we'll, we could take a look at. Section 7.4, oh, that was adding new boards, like the energy board and the ethics.
That was 7.4?
Yes, they added 7.4, and then, I just read Liz Waters' message, section 2.5D, check, check, look into the vacancy in elected offices.
Didn't you do that last time, too? That's always, that's been an issue.
Hers, well.
Maybe her issue's different than the last one?
Her issue is that it reads, "An appointee to a vacancy in an elective office shall serve until a successor is duly elected in either a special election or the next regular town election and has qualified." And Liz writes, "It would be preferable to have an appointee serve until the expiration of the term that they are filling. This would make it much easier to keep accurate track of the members, rather than having an individual serve a brief time on the effective board." So, that's another.
That deprives the lighter of the ability to finish at the next, at the next to-do.
That, that does deprive them.
Yeah, and I think it might also not be consistent in state statute. I think vacancies in elected offices are generally filled at the next regular election.
Under state law.
By statute, but you may be able to avoid them by Charter, I'm not sure. There are some things where the Charter can override, can override.
Could you look into that? Great. Then another, Barbara Emilio asked that, she would like to see the provision changed to allow non-U.S. citizens to, so that they can serve on committees. Peter Bradley wrote in and asking us to take a look at the thresholds at which expenses have to go to referendum. That's also on the board of selectmen's list. That's number, number seven. And Christina Mora Teo asked that she would like, she said that she would like to break up our tax payments to twice a year. So those are our additions. So how would you like to proceed tonight?
Well, we divided it up last time. I don't know what's the opposite of that.
Yeah.
Something with credit, credit, so, you know, we have to make a decision, I thought we made a decision the last time, that we're going to leave the easy stuff for the last, because maybe that'll get worked out with the harder stuff at the beginning, so I guess we start with ours.
Which, the hard step was the form of government.
What I showed.
That's all I did, my homework, and so.
Yep, okay, so let's, so let's open up discussion on that, then, and then that'll, that'll get our brains thinking in that, in that way for next Thursday, when we have our two guests, it'll probably will generate some questions. So Jay, did you have any thoughts that you'd like to share based on the research that you did? And thank you for doing all of that, too.
My first question is really what form of government is, well, I got, I got a couple, two, three questions. One, practically, what is the form of government we enjoy here in Bolton already? On paper, it's select, for the selectmen, and town meeting, but we have a strong administrative officer, that's a lot like a management, right? So.
Without the title.
Yeah, without the title, which leads me into question number two. This was, and maybe we don't know this, I don't know, and maybe we need to interview Sandy on this, what drove the question, why did the board of selectmen put this on our plate? What, what pressing need do we have to change the status quo? I think those are my main two questions. I, I put together, I'll explain also, I put together that spreadsheet that just lists all the, all the towns in Connecticut with a few statistics, and what their, what their reported forms of government. I didn't go look at everybody's Charter. Some of them, you know, the way they record it isn't exactly the way it is, but I suspect it's kind of like us. So that's, and you guys all have that spreadsheet.
There, there are other towns that have administrative officers that are referenced in, in their charters in some way, and have some, you know, formal role in the Charter. My dissatisfaction with our current Charter isn't so much with the form of government as with the diffusion of responsibility, in a way, the offices and the, and especially the administrative officers job has been created and referenced. The first problem I see with it is that it's virtually impossible to terminate or change the administrative office, because the way the Charter's written, it takes four votes to remove that person. And that may be easy the first few years, but when somebody's been in that job, no matter who they are, long enough to have a certain sense of inertia, getting four out of five votes for something as big as removing the most important employee the town has is virtually impossible in a board that's elected every two years, unless they vote, unless they run specifically for the purposes of doing that. And that's, that's such a divisive election, that it's a very bad idea to build that in. If you have a Charter that specifies, as some do, that a particular job has to be filled only for a three-year term, or only for a five-year term, or for renewable contracts that have to be voted on every year, or what have you, it takes away some of that possibility. But as long as it takes four votes to remove somebody, and they don't have a contract necessarily that expires, I mean, if the contract expires after three years, but it takes four votes to remove them, that's okay, because the contract expires, and then they're, they're done unless they get re-upped by another four-vote majority, or even a three-vote majority, but still, there has to be an affirmative act to extend them. If they don't have a set term of years, and you've essentially said you can't terminate them except for cause, and it takes four votes to terminate them, you've basically given them lifetime term. And that I object to. The second piece is that in the way it describes the job, what exactly is to be delegated to this position is unclear, whether the, it takes a majority of vote to delegate a task, whether the first selectman can delegate the task, whether it has to be formally delegated and instructed by a vote, or is it just some consensus? So if you're going to have this job that, in effect, is a town manager, or could become a town manager, but they only have the powers that are delegated to them by the board of selectmen, but then the board doesn't take votes to delegate powers, well, what is their power? Has it been delegated, has it not been delegated? See, if you have a town manager, all those things are specified either by statute or by Charter, but this is what the town manager can do, and they can do it, whether the board of selectmen gives it to them, tells them to do it or not. So if we're, again, I'm not necessarily advocating for a town manager, I, I do want to pick up on something, I think it was, at least one person felt interesting, it's not a waste that I agree with them, but I think that we have come to the point in this state where even a town of this size needs a certain level of trained professionalism to do certain jobs, and one of them is the person who is in town hall 100% of the time to deal with crises and administration and organization. And that, that's never going to be a first selectman unless it's made a full-time job with a full-time salary. It's, it could be a mayor, it could be a town manager, it could be a town administrator, but whoever it is, it has to be somebody with a certain credential of management, a certain capability of management, and a certain salary level to attract somebody with the ability and the, and the competence to do those things. And I personally don't care whether it's a mayor, a first selectman, a town manager, a town manager, I don't care who you call it, what title, or how it gets there, as long as the person is chosen in a way that makes it likely you get those capabilities, has responsibility for those things, and is removable when they fail in those responsibilities. You can remove them by an election, you can remove them by, by firing them, you can remove them by a contract, but they have to be removable when they don't do the job. And it can't be so insurmountable, or so divisive that the town destroys itself to do that. That, that's my feeling about it, and I'm agnostic about which of the choices we choose, I think you can, any one of them can work in a small town. We just have to decide, you know, what we feel is going to work the best for us.
So that leads me to several different issues that I've just jotted down.
And was that the point?
And let me tell you right now, I'm sure I didn't capture them all. So the reality is that, you know, the minute you introduce the election, some things that you said you were contradicting yourself at the same time, whether you're intending to or not, I don't know, but, you know, that's what makes it so challenging. And it, we have to make other determinations as far as terms considered, whether there's a board of finance, whether there's not, what the size of the board of selectmen should be or shouldn't be, and are they able to remove somebody by, you know, you, everybody read the newspaper two weeks ago, the town manager in the town of Newton was fired, I guess it was on cause, but it was a party line vote, so the Republicans decided it was time for her to go, and the Democrats didn't feel that way, and it was a four-three vote, because she went, because that's how their Charter reads. So maybe we should take a look at that Charter, if that's something that you.
Well, that just took a simple majority.
Right.
Four out of five is not a simple.
Well, that, that's the point I'm making. So, and so maybe it's three out of five, and maybe the board of selectmen's seven, and we do do what Bill may have recommended, in roll, or no, I guess it was Chris recommended.
Four out of five is, five is fine, if it's a three-year term.
Well, why, why does it need to be three? What if it's five? What if it's four years?
Whatever it is, if it's a four-year term, if it's a five-year term, as long as it's a term that's not so long that it becomes.
So what about taking out everything in the Charter that has to do with the administrative officer, which is, we're talking about now, section, it's section 5.1D deals with the administrative officer. Paragraph one, two, three, four, and five, the, what about taking all of that out and just leaving the paragraph, the preamble that says, "The board of selectmen shall hire an administrative officer to assist the board of selectmen in conducting town affairs by performing such responsible and high-level administrative supervisory and research duties and functions as may be determined by the board of selectmen." And then those powers and duties are all, will all, would all be described in the person's contract, which I think is the case now. I think that Josh Kelly operates under a contract, which is for a term of, it's for a time, I haven't seen it, but I assume there's, he can be terminated for the cause.
That's what's.
I'm applying this time.
Okay, so, you know.
So, Quay, you're the only one that was on the, well, I'm sorry, have you finished?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, you're the only one that was ever, out of the people that are sitting here, and most of the people in the audience, I think, that was ever on the board of selectmen. Who is the town administrator accountable to? Is it the first selectman? Is it the entire board of selectmen? How does that work, and in whose direction are they, you know, who's steering the ship?
Well, I found it to be very personality-oriented. I think, I think that our former first selectman had a very close working relationship with our former administrative officer.
Okay.
So I don't think, and actually, I remember, I, when, I was on the subcommittee that dealt with this particular section.
Yeah.
Where we added all this information in here about the administrative officer's duty. We did that specifically to increase the power of the selectman to oversee the administrative officer, and it didn't happen, the oversight didn't happen. So, you know, so no matter what you put in the Charter, if you don't have people who are going to follow the Charter, or hold those people accountable for not following the Charter, you're not going to end up with the result that you wanted, and that, that was what happened here. So on my, my term on, on the selectmen, it was very much the first selectman working with the administrative officer, and the, I felt like the guidance was given mostly by the first selectmen, very little guidance, very little guidance given by the others, other selectmen. And, and this is, but that was not what the Charter said it should, how it should have worked.
And it wasn't driven by discussions that transpired in the meetings of the board of select people at the time in regard to the direction of the town we should be traveling in. So you guys didn't, the five of you didn't get together and say, okay, well, I think we should do this, this, and this, and then more, Bobby went and talked to Joyce and said, okay, everybody, you heard what they said, go do this, this, and that.
I don't feel like that's the way it worked.
Okay. So what do you think about Adam's other thought, which intrigues me, in regard to just paying the first selectmen, you know, some amount of money, you picked a number, it doesn't make a difference to me, but, you know, a reasonable amount of money that they can make a living, and turn it into a whole-time job? I mean, is there merit to that?
I'd like to hear some other opinions about that. Go ahead.
I'd like to weigh in on a couple of things. So in terms of the global, big picture, I'd like to put some things out. I thought everybody's comments were excellent. In terms of having this conversation, I think it'd be great to have it with Bob and Laura and Sandy. Two people have had the first selectmen job and learned what it's like, why did it get added to our docket, and learned some of the details, and I thought that would flow in, and that would give us great insights about which direction to go, plus our two guest speakers. But in terms of our time limit, and all the things we need to cover, in terms of the big picture of government, for over 20 years, I was the lead recruiter for one of the political parties, trying to find people to run for office, and I think we have an enormous problem with getting people to run for office and taking these jobs. We need to think about them, and the time constraints, and the nature of jobs are changing, and people don't have the spare time they used to. People aren't reading the newspapers, there's enormous challenges our community is facing. So I think we need to have a conversation about that, how many people on the boards, if we're going to give them a stipend for serving on these boards, what are we going to do? And when I was recruiting, I really wasn't going, hey, what political party? Bill Anderson brought this up. I just tried to find people that had, cared about the town, and I used to make hundreds of phone calls each year, a lot of times I'd refer them over to the other political party, and if a person was unaffiliated, I'd say, would you rather run for Republicans or Democrats? We don't care, but we're really looking for people that are going to be administrators and run these boards, very challenging to get them.
There are, right now, four, and there were five, former town chairs in this room for this public hearing, and every one of them agreed. And every one of them agrees with you how hard it is to get people to step up, to run for an office, or even to take a job, to take an appointed role. That's really time-consuming. And we're going to find that's worse.
As time moves on.
As time moves on. Unless there's some magic way to improve community involvement, which I don't know of one yet. And we've all struggled with that over the last decade.
So then, in other big picture things, there's been a lot of talk about eliminating the board of finance. And I served on the board of finance for a while. I was chairman. I believe that has merit. We need to understand the pros and cons of that. We need to understand how finances are handled in town. We have a town treasurer. We have a finance department. We have a board of education finance department. And when I was on the board of finance, we were trying to integrate it into a uniform system. We are at a unique window of time where our first selectman is an accountant in terms of us trying to do something. And I think it's important that we incorporate in the charter that when we have a referendum, that ahead of that referendum, there's a plain language income statement and balance sheet that can go to the voters. And also, when they can come in here, they can pick up a copy. We did this when I was on the board of finance on a very simple level. It needs to be done on a higher level. And also, we have what the big changes are in budget. So if we're counting on the electorate to vote on the budget, to approve the budget, we need to give them a plain language financial document, or consider this, so that when they come in to vote, their vote has meaning. And we need to have other conversations about that. The next big point I want to make is we've got these big topics, but we've got a lot of little topics. And it's too early to say, but I think we're going to be a good group. And I don't think we bring a lot of baggage here. We just want to help our town. Some of these things, I thought it might be great if we could divide, and maybe it'd just be one person, or if there's a couple that have, and take some of these smaller topics and adjust our meetings. Well, if our meetings are going to go for two hours, we're going to spend a half hour on this topic, half hour on this topic. And then the little things, we can allocate some time. So like, I'll give you an example. If you've got a tie vote, how do you solve it? I was reading town charters. They've got these special elections and all this stuff. I always thought it was the finest moment I've ever seen in town history, when they rolled these coins and they solved it by that. And, you know, it had national press. I never was so proud to be a resident of Bolton. And you know what? If it's a tie vote, okay, the luck of the draw. Just let's get it over with. Not a special election. It doesn't have any meaning. I'd be strongly considerate of that. And I think that's something we might have a consensus on easily. But we've got a big docket. There's other big issues we haven't talked about. How do we allocate our time?
Yep, that's good. So why don't we, let's stay focused then on this, on the form of government issue for now. And then before we adjourn tonight, I'd like to, I think we could divide up the list again. Just make, go over the division again, and then we can make subcommittees, two, three people groups. And we can meet separately, bring our recommendations in, if you all agree with that. So let's go back to the form of government, and let's stay on that topic. Did you have anything that you wanted to add from, based on your research?
I wanted to just comment on one of the questions you raised, Rich, about whether the, so the question, I think, that we're looking at right now is whether the chief executive officer or the high, I guess it is the chief executive officer, is elected or appointed. Right? There's a study that Sacred Heart did, it's like 2007. I don't know if anybody's looked at this. And it correlates highly a town's bond rating as a proxy for the town's fiscal solidity with an appointed, I believe, if I'm reading the statistics right, an appointed manager versus an elected manager. Says a bunch of stuff about it. I just would bring that to everybody's attention.
So it's a higher bond rating correlates with an appointed...
A professional manager.
Okay.
You know, take it for what it's worth. It's just something I saw. And when you raise that question of whether we would want an elected chief executive or an appointed one, that goes to that point.
So how does everybody envision a town manager interacting with... What do you think the role of a town manager would be if we also had a first selectman? Like, what then would be, what would become of the role of the selectman if we had a manager?
Look, the manager needs to be accountable to someone. So now, is the someone the first selectman? Or is it someone the board of selectmen? So that's what you have to determine. I thought today that's how it was run, based on what the board thought. Then they gave instructions to the town manager, or the town administrator, excuse me, tonight. And that's what, but I never have served on any of those, on a board of selectmen. So I don't really know how that functions, you know? I've been to a couple of meetings, but that doesn't make me qualified by any means. So, but Glenn, my, I'm sorry. You know, in order to understand that piece, I've got to understand what's going to happen with the board of finance first. If you, if, we all sat here tonight and took a straw boat and said, "Okay, everybody, the board of finance is not going to be unemployed. It's gone." Now we're going to talk about a different, now we're going to approach the board of selectmen entirely differently, in my opinion, because you're going to give them so much more authority. And if I understood that piece first, that would help me better understand whether a town manager or our first selectman would be the right direction ahead. And I don't know, you know, our population, this was great information. So I thumbed through this, and I printed out the pages that I thought were applicable. And I thought that we were, you know, over 5,000 people from a town population standpoint. And lo and behold, of course, we're not, because there's an excess of people for the town. So, you know, but I looked at both pieces. I looked at the towns that were 5,000 to 10,000 people. And I looked at the towns under 10,000, under 5,000 people. To see what the differentiation is between how the government functions. And so that's insightful as well. So it's something that I think we also have to consider. But, you know...
So I have this publication, which was from the last time we considered the charter. And I'm just going to read you a few things that came out of this. "What are the benefits of the council manager form of government? Freeze elected officials to focus on policymaking and community issues. Empowers elected officials to lead and to develop a vision for the community. Offers the flexibility required for a community to go in new directions while providing continuity during transitions. Encourages open communication between citizens and government. Political power is not concentrated in the chair or the mayor, but is shared by all members of the council. Diffuses the power of special interests. All constituents and interests have a voice, not just those that are well-funded or well-organized. Eliminates partisan politics from personnel, financial, and contracting decisions. Merit-based decision-making based on qualifications and performances. Encourages the development and retention of talented municipal employees. And a professional, nonpartisan manager oversees day-to-day operations and frees elected officials to focus on policy issues. Has access to information about latest trends and best practices. Devotes time and skills to tackle a problem or opportunity. Assists the council or board of selectmen with the development of a vision and long-range strategic planning." So develops a core of professional staffs, drawing emphasis on professional ethics. So that's just one, that's just one view. But is that, is that something that we can't, is this describing something very different from what we could have with a first selectman and a strong administrative officer?
Who authored that point, just from my own application?
International City/County Management Association.
Yeah. That scares me a little.
I think, you know, so following what Adam said, I think it's, you know, we kind of, we're kind of already paying for a town manager-type system, right? We already have a relatively reasonably highly compensated chief administrator. So we kind of have done the hard part. You know, the problem is the supermajority, you know. And one of the things, when you were talking, I might have thought, with a couple tweaks, we could have all the benefits of a council manager.
I think that was what the intention was. I recall the discussions about the charter at the time, that it was an attempt to kind of create a position that could be a town manager-like, if you will. And I didn't, I don't object to the attempt, but to how it plays out.
It was a half-measure that didn't really play out.
I think the thing that we miss in this town, from the form that we have, is the long-range planning piece inside town hall. The ability to have a vision of a project that goes past a couple of years and go out and do that. And economic development is the perfect example. To the extent that there are parcels in this town that could have a future that's more than just a one-off thing, that would make a significant difference in the tax base, for example. That, if anything, if any town can influence that at all, it's by some professional who has a long-range plan to bring out the developer, to bring people in to look at that parcel, to brainstorm about ideas for that parcel, to talk about, you know, public partnerships that can make it easier to develop or better situated to develop. And a two-year first selectman can't do that. They can't focus on that and have a long-range plan, because they can't be sure they're going to be there when it comes about, or that they'll have the votes to support the plan or whatever. Whereas a town manager could, or a, you know, long-term professional manager can, or a mayor can, maybe, but a strong mayor can. But I don't think a first selectman can do that. And I think the proof is...
From the developer's standpoint, believe me, because I've been through it, and the administration changes, and the whole deal that was correlated, now it's down over there in the circular file.
Don't you agree? So, but a really good town manager can do it when they've got a five-year contract and they think, you know, the success of that project might get them another five-year contract and a raise. Yeah.
So what, well, couldn't, could we solve that issue by hiring an administrative officer with a five-year contract?
We could. I mean, we could, making that administrative officer so secure in those abilities or those powers. But it's a push in terms of a stretch of what the first selectman form of town meeting, form of government hits. I mean, I'm not saying it can't be done that way. I think that was the intent. And there seem to be some other towns that have, you know, administrative officers that maybe are close to that. I just think that the risks are that you get the other version that we've had, where you don't get long-term plans, but you have all the detriments.
Well, one of the challenges, of course, is especially when we're coming in from the town manager side of it, you know, they have to be very, they're afraid, you know? They say, "Okay, here, I'm going to bring this project in." And it all sounds good and great when we first initially, you know, start undertaking the conversations. And then as the thing evolves, things change. And now all of a sudden, it's political football. And this guy's job's on the line, or this lady's job's on the line. So that's the other challenge. So do you take the first selectman's position? Do we run the first selectman for four years, and the rest of the boards wrestle select people for two? Or do you let them all run for four? Huh?
Or maybe everybody.
Well, maybe everybody for four, you know?
And that sort of points out the difference between a board of finance and a board of selectmen doing the jobs of the board of finance, is that a board of selectmen turns over every two years. They have to go out to the voters every two years. Board of finance doesn't. They're staggered.
The same thing with BOE?
And the same thing with BOE. But BOE, that's by statute. It can't be anything but staggered, I believe.
I don't think that's, that's interesting. I don't know about that. That's not the case. No, that's not the case, because I can think of a different town that they run them all at once. Yeah. And they can deal.
So other thoughts on this, on this issue?
They can be.
I think for me, I'd like to hear what Bob Moore and Sandy in particular have to say. I'm thinking of them one night, give us some time.
Would you want to hear Bob next Thursday when we've got the other two guests? Would that be, would that be a good time for him to come? Or would you want to hear him on a separate meeting?
If we have Sandy here to talk about what they've learned in their decades of service, I think they might be here for a while.
I don't want to infringe upon the people we invited. Let them go first, and then, you know, our people are more flexible, maybe.
Okay.
I wanted to ask a question about that, because I was wondering about that. And John, you brought this up. Would there be a portion of that meeting where we would want to go into executive session because some of it may deal with past personnel issues? Should we be ready for that?
I don't know if we can go into executive session on this floor.
It's sense of past personnel issues, that person is no longer employed. So whether we even want to pile or talking about the particulars of that individual. But, I mean, there's...
I'm interested in the ways it should go, huh? Having not been on the inside of it, but seeing it from the outside. So I just, I just wanted to raise that. I mean, that is a personnel review question, but it is an ex-employee, but probably also, yeah, it's an open question. I'll leave that to the parliament, for the FOIA experts in the group.
I don't think you can go into... And I actually, even if we could, I don't think either of the selectmen could talk about a former employee without that place.
From a personnel standpoint.
From a personnel standpoint. They could talk about the job. They could talk about the way it works.
They say that, you know, yes, they were employed for a certain time period, and this is the title they had, and this is when they started, this is when they left. And they're like, that's kind of about it.
We don't hire and fire positions, so we wouldn't be able to have that discussion. They could talk about that...
We can talk about issues that came...
In their own board, but not in ours.
But, you know, unfortunately, we, the board of selectmen, it was meeting tonight, too. It would have been good if they could have been here. But I think we should be able to afford them the same courtesy we gave to the board of finance and the board of selectmen, I mean, the board of education members and economic development, other groups. We probably need to re-invite all of our boards and commissioners to keep coming, because they all haven't come here. At a point of order, Madam Chair, we have a former registered boarder and a fire commissioner here. Is there anything you want to say? I mean, we're glad you came.
Thank you.
Is there something you want to tell us? Would that be a, if we could do a quick little public comment?
Sure, did you have any, did you have any public comments?
One of my questions was going to be, what's the role? And I've read the charter. I'm on the fire commission, also the senior commission. And they're totally different, of how they function, how they answer to the selectmen, and how they support their, the seniors as opposed to the fire department. And I don't understand.
I don't think that's our jurisdiction. The roles, I believe, are set out in the charter. Have you ever, have you ever looked at that?
Yeah, I've read the charter.
Okay, so I can't help you. I don't think...
But my question is, why even have commissions?
Well, we are going to be talking about the roles of commissions.
Boards, I understand. Commissions, I don't know.
We will be considering functions of boards and commissions. So, go ahead.
I want to throw up for our group's consideration. So really, there's almost nothing about the board of education. Instead of having the board of education and the board of finance come here in terms of streamlining our meetings, I would personally like to go to the board of finance and board vet and tell them, first of all, the board of finance mentioned that it's under consideration, that we're considering eliminating the board of finance. And how do they want to reply to that inquiry and get their opinion on that?
So I did send a, I sent the list of the items to the board chair and asked her to send it to everybody else, and the notes and...
But in terms of getting their input, instead of us having them come and losing an hour or two, let us go to them. And I'd also like to go to the board of education, because the board of education has a lot of autonomy by state statute, okay? But there is an area that would be very beneficial, and we've had some compromises from the board of that in the past. And that is on their financial reporting. They have the freedom to spend their money however they choose. But I think it would be good to have stronger language and consideration in town charter on having that information presented in a uniform format. Again, this flows into what we give the voters when they come to referendum and publishing financial reports. And it might be good for us to go to the board vet and see if there's any other concerns they have about the charter. they have about the charter, and I think if we get two or three of us go, or however many people want to go, we can leave our meetings set aside for more global issues.
That's a good idea. So is there, so you would, one of us would go and just say, do you have any input on these, on these items?
Because you've already given them the email. I know, I got an email from the, from the, from the board of appeals that this was happening.
So is there anybody who-
So I hope the other boards and commissioners do the same thing.
Is there anybody who would like to attend either the board of Ed or board of finance meetings? A meeting of either one?
I'm more, I'm more the volunteer for both.
Okay.
I'd more like to go to the board of Ed, but I'd like somebody to come with me.
Okay. Do you two coordinate?
Sure.
Great.
And if any, you don't have to go the next couple of weeks or anything, but does anybody have any things that they want us to ask of them when we go?
So I have a more, but see, I have a thought that I'd like to offer, but it would depend upon if the board of finance is going to be in place or not be in place. So I don't know if I hold the thought back now or I put it on the table now.
I think you should put it on the table.
Okay. Assuming the board of finance is eliminated, we just have a board of selectmen that's going to be running as the finance board as well as the board of selectmen at the same time. I think that we have to start looking at shared services. It's been something, it's been an issue with me for the last eight years, nine years at least in this town. I know there's been a lot of talk about it, and one of the things that I think needs to happen is we need to have one finance department. For one town, for a small town, we don't need a finance director over at the board of education. We have a finance director at the town level. We need one finance director, and that's what I think the board of education needs to understand that piece as well. Just my opinion.
Is that, is that set by charter?
No. I don't know that, so I don't know that there's anything in the charter.
In all the pages of the charter, this is the only page that the board of Ed has. This is it.
Because-
They have the statutes.
Because they have the statutes on their side, and I don't think you have any ability to tell them what to do, who they hire, who they don't hire, how they deal with their spending, or I think you can, you can tell them what their budget is, and that's all you can-
So we confronted that-
I think you're wrong, but-
We confronted that when I was on the board of finance, and it was done through the format of cooperation, and they agreed to give us their financials and put it in the standardized format, which we had the board of selectmen. So this would not be on our issue, how they spend things, and the finance director, in terms of keeping the financials, may not be able to remove that position from them, but you could have all the reporting requirements, I'm pretty sure on this, go in conformance of what the board of selectmen said.
So four years ago, maybe three or four years ago, we were replacing the finance director, and that's when this all, this surfaced, that conversation at that time. And one of the things that had come up was the fact that you meld it all into one office.
Yeah, I do think that this is well beyond the scope of the charter.
Well, that's interesting because, you see, when I look at this, this is where we're going to have a spirited conversation now, because when I look at boards, commissions, agency offices and related, so number two, I don't think that, I think I'm well within the purview of this conversation, so.
Which section of the charter are you-
No, I'm looking at the draft where solution now. So I'm looking at number two, item number six. Review filed related of section 3.1.
3.1.
Yeah. Commissions, boards, agencies, offices, related sections for the purposes of determining whether each of the listed positions should continue to be elected or appointed and so on and so forth. So-
That's out. That's-
Yes, very limited. Filing offices will be filled by election, the following town commission will be filled with town elections, and then, so there's only three very short sections of that. So that section, I don't think is going to address what you are getting at.
Okay. And I don't know how you have a board of education that isn't filled by election because the statutes provide for, I don't think.
Well, if you're limited, two of you, you should go to the board of education meeting. At least they have been forewarned on what you're interested in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can mention that too, and I know over 20 years ago, there was an informal agreement that they were going to merge the finance position of the board of Ed into the town. We also, we have a town treasurer that's added into the mix too, so we've got two finance departments and a town treasurer.
So I know the board of selectmen spent a lot of time on this three, four years ago, so I'm going to be interested in asking Sandy and Bob about it when they come. So I'll make them a notation in that regard.
Okay. Okay, so do we have anything else that we want to talk about in terms of form of government? I would suggest if there's, if there's information out, there must be information out there, like I've got this PowerPoint thing up from 10 years ago that just describes the, described the benefits of a town manager form of government. Perhaps we could do before next week, do some research on our own, pros and cons, selectmen form of government, town council form of government, so that when we are talking, when we listen to John L. Sessler, and I think his name is John, we will have a, some kind of, some background for that discussion. Think about some questions that you want to ask. So I think, I don't know, if anybody else wants to continue that conversation, we can. Otherwise, we could move on to creating our subcommittees, if you feel we're ready to do that. Ready to do that? Okay, good. So I do think that the subcommittee is a good idea. It would be, we have to, this is homework outside of our meetings. It will require us getting together our own, you know, subcommittee groups, talking about the issues, reporting back to the full board. So it will take additional work outside of, outside of our regular meetings. The, the way we, so the items, the 14 items, the 13 items that the selectmen gave us, we had already divided up. There are another, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, another nine, so I'd like us to put those nine under the different categories. So the first one was section 5D, the administrative officer's role. My suggestion was to do away with that entire section except for the preamble. So which, which subcommittee would you think that goes under? Is that-
Two.
Four.
Powers, appointments, allocation, responsibilities. Okay. Actually, that's, we already do have section 5, we're not, okay, so, all right.
That one, what are you calling that number? The, what was sections 2, 3, 5, 9, and 11? Are you calling-
Yeah, we're called that-
Thought I had procedural, but I can't remember.
No, that's the, that's the other category. This one-
This one is 1, 7, 8, 10, and 13.
Right. This one is powers, appointments, allocation, responsibilities. Okay, the next new item on the list is section 10.3, conflicts of interest. Make sure that the language either mirrors the ethics policy or does not, this does not conflict with it. So 10.3, I guess that would be under structural procedural because we do have chapter 10 under that already. The next one is the recommendation by one of the residents that citizens must be part of determining the scope of services of grants. I'm not really even sure that that's a charter question. Does any, I mean-
I think it's a charter question.
You do not think it's a charter question? Okay.
So somebody should respond to that citizen and explain that to them, I believe, don't you think?
I will.
So that's, for instance, if somebody wants to get something done at the heritage farm, a grant that they, and they would go through that meeting, they're not in charter.
Well, here, yes, and here are the two issues that came up. One was the, do you remember we had, we had a center study done for just what to do with the town center, how it could be, you know, made into a cohesive whole, possibly add some retail here? There was a recommendation by the consultant that we do a pond right in the back here and also put a road right through, and it really did not reflect what the residents wanted. So, and then the second thing is the Nathan Hill corridor, which is the former Route 6 property that was given back, that was supposed to be Route 6, it was given back to the town. The scope of services was supposed to include very well-marked boundaries, and I just happened to know, because I've been walking out there, that the boundaries are really not well-marked at all, and that we never did an A2 survey, which I believe was part of the scope of services as well. So this person is frustrated because he sees a grant come, so people, you know, grant is obtained by the town saying this is what the grant is going to cover, but then there's no, there's no clear oversight to make sure that the grant really does what it's supposed to do. So I don't think that, I don't think that this is a charter issue either. I think it is, it's a procedural issue that has to be handled, maybe by the administrative officer. I'm not sure. But, so I will, I will deal with that person. I'll respond to that person. The next item was section 11.1A. This is what Patrice brought up about how, it was, actually had to do with planning and zoning, Adam, that having to elect the chairman of the board, there's a requirement, I think a 45-day requirement, and if sometimes the board doesn't meet within that 45 days, did I, am I explaining that correctly?
Yeah, there are other similar kinds of situations.
So that means the boards have to call special meetings just to hold a, just to hold an election to appoint the chairman, which is just really kind of wasteful.
I think that's something we should address for all people that have to, all boards and commissions that have to elect chairman. It says every year.
Right.
It would make more sense if it was just done after election.
So let's have that-
Two years or four years on.
I think that's a procedural question.
I think we had it under, we had it under powers, appointments, allocation, responsibilities.
Well, I don't think that's too broad because that's, I mean, section 11 might be under that, although it really probably ought to be under procedural and structural because it's really organization.
Okay. Why don't we shift it, why don't we shift it down?
So we're moving 11 to the procedural and structural?
Yes.
Like things like whether Roberts rules of order are going to apply, that's not, that's a lower level.
That's procedural.
Yes.
I mean, textbook.
And then my issue about having the paper ballots at town meetings, that would be at nine, that's in section 9.9. That would be procedural too.
Yeah.
Section 7.4, that's just adding any new boards that have come into being since the last charter revision, and that would be section 7.4.
Are we moving all of section 9 to procedural? Or is this an issue?
Let's take a look at it.
Town meeting processes. Town meeting procedure.
I would say yes.
Yeah, I think we do it too.
A lot of those sections, they were not brought up for review, but, yeah, but I think we should, I think we should move the whole section, all of section 9, I'm sure, procedural and structural. Okay, you got 7.4, that's adding the new boards. Do we already have section 7 under, under the headings?
That's already procedural, sure.
Okay. Section 2.5D, that was what Liz Waters wrote to me about, about vacancies in elected offices. What do we have that under? That's under-
Vacancies.
Powers, appointments, allocation, responsibilities. I think we could leave that there. And the request that tax payments be made in two installments, is that a charter issue? Is that, I don't know whether that's determined by statute, by charter. I don't think it is.
I think it's in the charter now.
Who determines it?
It's not statutory because you can do it either, you can do it each year.
No, every town is twice a year. We're one of the few, so just in the summer.
Yeah, so I don't know.
We should just look up a town that's twice a year and look at their charter, look at their-
I don't remember seeing it.
Any town around us. Birmingham, Manchester.
This has been a reoccurring topic in this town for-
Yes, we have.
Twenty-five years I've been here, so I've been 23 years there. So the fact of the matter is that, you know, there's, they want to collect all the money so that, because I think they're, you know, gaining the system in regard to the interest. I don't think it, you know, I understand her point, and I think she has a valid point, and I don't know why it is the way it is. I must understand the history of it.
They've postage mailed twice a year.
Doesn't increase costs.
You know, the town, Manchester doesn't even send it out twice a year. They send it out once now. Some other communities are doing the same thing. You're obligated to remember the second Monday symbol, it's supposed to be the same.
It's not in the charter, either way.
Okay, so I will respond to Christina, and I will say that that's not a charter issue. I don't know, did, if anybody-
It could make it a charter issue.
Right. I'm wondering why it isn't a charter issue.
I don't know.
It should be under the finance piece.
There might, I mean, in chapter 8, it's called finance and taxation, but I'm looking through it, and I don't see anything about the taxation part.
Well, it just says it's about the tax book, preparing issue tax bills, but it doesn't say when they're to be issued or when they're to be paid.
What are you reading there?
Page 24.
22, 24. Is it wise to bake that into the charter? And is it, will it tell us to bake that into the charter?
I don't think it is.
I think we have to find out where the, where it is now. It might be, maybe it's an ordinance, in which case we cannot change that. That an ordinance would have to be, I think, would have to be changed by the board of selectmen. I don't know. Can I, anybody in the audience happen to know that, how the, how the tax, taxation is determined in town? Cheryl, do you know? Okay.
I would have thought that the charter takes presidents over ordinance.
I think it-
It says here in paragraph E that the assessment of property for taxation and the collection of taxes shall be carried out in accordance with the general statutes.
Which, which section A do you have?
Page 24, bottom page.
Yeah, that's at the bottom of paragraph E.
Page 14. Go accept those otherwise provided in this charter. It's just a truce and simple. I mean, assessment is all governed by-
Yeah, by statutes, but it's not the collection.
That's not governed by statute.
Yeah, I guess my, my thought is if it is a, if it is something that could be an ordinance or it could be in the charter, why would we bake it into the charter?
Right, I don't think it should be baked into the charter.
He's pretty clear about that.
I think that's something-
Why should it carry out in accordance with the general statutes?
I think that's something the board of selectmen should determine.
I do too. I mean, that has a lot to do with revenue flow, and it would, I think that would be a huge change to the system in our town to do that, and-
Here's where it conflicts with itself. You know, you read it, and it says, in accordance with general statutes. Well, are we in accordance with general statutes, or is the rest of the state of Connecticut in accordance with general statutes?
Well, no, I'm going to predict the general statutes say, either town, at the schedule the town decides, they can collect taxes.
It might give you only a few choices, like orderly, biannually or annually, but it gives you choices. I'm quite certain of that.
And it also has that 70%.
Could we check that?
Well, that part's, you can't get like-
Yeah.
I'll try to find out where this, where this power lies, and then I'll bring that information back to the board.
It's so funny to think they don't reference the general statute, so that tells me there's a reason for that too. a reason for that too.
Then there's the, um, the provision regarding the non-US citizens serving on boards.
So, what's, uh, what's perpetuating that? What, what, why are we talking about this?
Uh, there's a very active, I, I, speculation on my part, just guessing, but there's a very active, there's a very active resident in town who is, she does a lot of good work, and, uh, she's, she is not a US citizen, and, um, my guess is that Barbara Modio probably knows her and probably feels that she would be a good person to have on a town board and whose vote, who would be a voter, an active voter, if she were a citizen. So, that, that's, that's just my speculation. A very, it's a very personal, a very personal situation.
Yeah, I don't know that we're here to do that, but.
But it is, that is in the charter.
That's her election not to be a citizen though, not ours, right? She could be counted a citizen, correct? This person, he or she, I don't know who this person is.
I, I think that's probably true, but I think that since the question was asked, we should at least address it, and I'll try to find that section.
Yeah, it's in the section on appointees.
Two point five.
Where it says, I think both appointees and electees' boards have to be electors, and that.
Where do you see that, Adam?
What section?
I want to say it's in eleven. Eligibility two point three, I think for elected offices, it's all it. No person shall be elect, eligible for election to any town office who is not at the time of this nomination and election, an elector of said town. So, for elected town offices, and that might be in the statutes.
It references the section with the general statute.
In appointed offices, I'm not so sure about that, but it does say. Section seven point three at sixteen, all members of appointed boards and commissions must be electors of the town.
And you can't be an elector unless you're a citizen.
Right.
Where are you, seven point three?
At sixteen, yeah, bottom of sixteen. Which, I'm not really sure that there, that that's true, that that needs to be true. I mean, do you need to be an elector to be on the, the library board or the senior citizens commission?
And you don't think the state statute covers that?
I doubt it.
Not, not for those.
Not for those, maybe for elected boards probably.
Well, so, elected versus appointed, so, uh, so we could appoint her to the Welling Commission, for instance, or to a person to the Welling Commission.
Possibly. I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that every commission is potentially something that you could be, without being an elector, but there are certain commissions that, being an elector.
If it's an elected board commission, you have to be an elector.
So, that's section seven point three, and what was the other one, Adam?
Two point, what is it?
Two point three.
Yeah, two point three.
So, those are, we've already, all right, so we've already got those on segregation under our, our two different topics.
And it raises a question, question in my mind about referendums, because you don't have to live in Bolton, if you, only if you own property in Bolton, you can vote for the referendum owner.
Right.
And there are people that have never lived here, but they own property or they own a business, and they're allowed to vote on a budget, phone in or if they don't.
That actually was a very big issue the last time we reviewed the charter, so I didn't see that, I don't think that's on the selectmen's list this time, so I don't think that we have to deal with it again.
So, we're all equal, except that we, there's seven that are more equal than us.
Yeah. All right, so we've got our, we've got the, the three big categories. I think we're all going to handle the form of government, did we all agree with that? All handle the form of government, all handle the board of finance issue?
I think so.
And then there's the, the powers, appointments, allocation of responsibilities, and there's the structural procedural stuff.
So, did we slot Pete Bradley's hobby horse, where that's in?
That's going to be chapter, that's going to be under, um, chapter nine, town meeting and related, and related issues.
Okay, both of those are there. And then I wanted to add one to procedural, which is the, the conduct of meetings, let's just put in some default rules for telephonic or other meetings in compliance with FOIA, just so it's there, just to make it easier for everybody to phone in to a meeting. Not that I'm going to do that or anything, but you know, sometimes I gotta travel.
It's okay, it's come up many times.
Yeah. And maybe put Roberts rules of order by default, because I don't think they're in there, I think we're using them, no, we didn't, we never adopt them.
They're in.
And it says, it's one line that says, a quorum will be determined in accordance with Roberts rules, and that's it. I think that's category three.
Three, chapter three, you mean?
No category, category three.
Oh, procedural, okay, yeah.
Conduct of meetings.
So, we've got two, three, five, eleven, under powers, appointments, allocation, and then structural procedures.
I think we moved eleven to.
We moved eleven.
Oh, we did, so now we've got, so our structural procedure is way too heavy now.
It's big.
We've got one, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, thirteen. So, I think we need to shift some back.
We're divided, yeah.
It, oh, into three groups.
Right.
Well, that'd be a good idea too. Yeah. Okay, so let's, how about, let's, one, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, thirteen, do I have them all? Yes, okay. Nine is a pretty big chapter, so let's put that with. One, seven, let's do one, seven, nine, eight, ten, eleven, thirteen. Okay. So, are, does anyone want to volunteer? Does anybody have any, are these particular subject matter that really appeals to them that they'd like to?
We're, we're, we're going to be meeting pretty soon, we got to set the dates tonight too, right?
Yes, that's right, we do.
And we wanted to get out for nine if we could.
Yes, how, how close are we?
So.
We don't just tie.
Oh, you're doing great.
Yeah.
You're doing, you're doing a great job. So, uh, I didn't know if maybe we could get this list typed out and we could think about it and.
I like that, you like that, I'm having a tough time conceptualizing.
Oh, fine, okay.
But, but then, so if we could get the list in at the next meeting, but for tonight, I don't know how quickly we're going to go and decide what night our regular meetings are going to be, I don't think we have anybody with a book, with room availability either.
Oh, that's right.
Josh said he'd be available if, by phone.
He goes, no, but it is.
I think the harder part is getting a date, and I think the easier part is finding a space, so we can agree on a date, whether we'll always be able to find.
They're flexible in the room too.
Yes.
Didn't we say the twentieth?
Well, we definitely have a meeting, we've already set the term, right, if there's future meetings, but wait, let's, wait, before we, before we go on to there, I would like to get us nailed down on the groups, or no, our, our next step is going to be, I'll type up this, retype this list into groups, right, and send it out to everybody, and then.
Because there could be some additions to it too.
There are additions, the ones that I hand over.
But there may be more than that afterwards.
That's true.
Is, is our intent to have small groups do everything under procedural, everything under responsibility, or are we going to, hey, help me on item one, three, and four?
I think the way we just divide them up was, I just split up, I split structural procedure into two groups because it's such a big group, so it would be one, seven, and nine, eight, ten, eleven, and thirteen.
So, the, the intent is to spread us out into like two or three of us into that?
Yes.
And if everybody had interest in some and nobody had others, we're just.
Somebody has to just.
I'll suck it up. The intent of the, the first tier is like, just first tier review and we can participate when it comes back to us.
Definitely, oh, yeah, definitely, it's going to be a full, you know, this is just for efficiency, it's going to be full board discussion with whatever the information is brought back to, to everybody by subcommittees. Uh, okay, what were you going to say?
I just wanted to ask something.
Yes.
So, we had some minutes from the last meeting, it didn't show up here for approval, and I didn't know.
Meant to, I meant to do that, we should do that, yeah.
Well, I don't think we should do it tonight, I think because it's not on the agenda, we should just say we're going to approve the minutes to, to call meetings the next time.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to understand.
Yeah, thank you, I, I actually saw that on the, when this came in, and I, I wrote it on my, my other agenda. All right, so next, next meeting, we will approve tonight's, the minutes of last, last meeting and tonight's.
So, that will happen before public comment or after public comment?
Um, I think we'll do it after public comment, so people, some people would like to come and leave. Okay. So, now, if you all have your calendars, let's see, we're definitely on for February twentieth. How, how do people look for the, the March twelfth or nineteenth, because we have been talking about Thursdays?
So, are we now going back to one meeting per month first, is that what?
That's what we're going to start with, unless, if we start to get behind, we'll have to increase our, our pace.
Thursdays are good.
Thursdays are good for me.
Okay, how does everybody, what is, like, the twelfth, the twelfth, how does the twelfth look?
I'm free.
Jay?
Yes.
Jim?
Yep, true.
Good, okay, and you, you're okay with that?
Going to have to fix something.
Fix something with the date or with your?
No, with the date, sorry.
You're okay.
I got a conflict, I'm going to change it around.
Okay, then how about April sixteenth? I am away on the ninth, that's why I'm suggesting the sixteenth.
I'm in deep depression on the sixteenth, normally.
I think a meeting would look you right at it.
Well, I'm not so certain, but okay.
Does that, that look okay with everybody?
Yeah, sixteen.
Okay.
April?
April sixteen, May.
You're going to memorialize all you can send them out, right?
Good, I am.
Just making sure.
Who's the March date?
I'm sorry.
Twelve. Okay, May fourteenth?
Not good for me.
Not good, how about the seventh?
Seventh, yeah.
Seventh okay with everybody?
Adam?
Well, I'm starting to choose.
Seven does not work, okay, how about the?
But any day that, that weekend, the next would be bad, so.
It's, it's not good.
It's going to sell, don't worry.
Seventh and fourteenth don't work, so how about the?
Well.
How about the twenty-first?
I'm sorry, you're looking at dates in May right now?
Yes, May, May twenty-first?
That'll be a town committee meeting, because it'll, because it won't peak, because it'll be the third Thursday.
Fourth Thursday.
Okay, no, it's okay, that one's already.
Twenty-first okay?
Yeah.
And the April date was the sixteenth?
Yes. June. June eleventh?
Sure, okay.
Okay, July nine?
Okay. No, I'm not going to be here July ninth, but you can go on without me, so I'm not concerned about that.
So, we're going to go with the July ninth?
July nine. Are you going to, are you around at all? You go around at all this summer, or I know you go away a lot?
Yeah, that's going to be some of my challenges, but I'm going to have to try to figure it out. My main issue is that I might need to be in Las Vegas that week, and I've got to go back and check my schedule as well, because Memorial Day, so I'm probably coming back that night.
The twenty-first?
Yeah, but, um, I got to check the flight schedule. Um, I'll, I'll let you know, I can't determine it at this time, but certainly July ninth is going to be a challenge.
What about the sixteen, July sixteen?
Let's assume that I can do that.
Okay, everybody, what about the sixteen?
Sixteen is good.
Yep.
August thirteen?
No.
Twenty.
August twenty?
Yep. Twenty, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
September tenth?
So, sorry?
Good.
I'm sorry.
Okay. October eighth? Okay, November twelfth?
Can everybody do the twelve?
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you. December tenth?
Okay.
Great, all right.
Let's do January, that's got, almost like our last meeting before we have to submit things, January two thousand twenty.
Okay, that's, would be the fourteenth. Does that look okay with everybody?
By that time, we'll be panicking and having six meetings.
All right, so at the, for the next meeting, let's plan on dividing up into the subcommittee so, so that we can start on that work, and remember to think about your questions for our two guests.
Would you like to send those to you by email so you can start compiling the list, or do you just want us to come?
No, I think it should be dialogue with us and, and our guests.
Do I, or can I have permission to reach out to board yet? Make sure you wait.
Sure, yes, go ahead, because it, yeah, it might take you a while to coordinate your schedules with their, with their meeting days. Right.
Go ahead.
So, were we, when. Okay, just bring up something, I had mentioned that there's this organization called the National Civic League.
Yes.
And the dues are a hundred and seventy-five dollars a year, and they can come in, and they have sample charters, they really are oriented for, for small towns, if you want to, if anybody just want to contemplate that, the PAC that we got from CCM had an older version of a typical town charter which came from this organization, and they're on their ninth position of it, also, just to talk to some people, other communities have come and swear, they just might be a good resource for a limited amount of money.
I think it'd be good to ask Josh to look into this.
Sure.
And to see how, how he feels about the applicability and the value.
Okay, we can retell him.
Yes, definitely, yes, thank you. Okay, may I have a motion, unless there's anything to come before the meeting, did you want to say something?
No.
No, anything else to come before the meeting? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Adam said we don't need one.